Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting Wednesday, February the 12th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Any declarations of conflicts today? Sin and Rosemary, I know you're online. Any declarations of conflicts for you?
No conflict, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And no conflict for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Moved by Counselor Beck and seconded by Jackie. All those in favor? Wonderful. And can I get an adoption of the minutes from the February the 5th, 2025 meeting? Moved by Lee, seconded by Counselor McCabe. All those in favor?
In favor.
Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none. We'll move right on to our reports. The first one we have is 139 Kensington Road, PID 278234 and 278226. And David Gondrum, our Manager of Development, is here to present this application. So over to you, David.
Okay, thank you, Chair Yankoff. The following application is a request to proceed to public consultation for a rezoning request for subject properties identified as PID numbers 278226 and 278234. Subject properties are, as shown, as highlighted on the air photo on the screen at the southwest corner of Falconwood Drive and Kensington Road. The proposal is to rezone the two subject properties from the current R1S zone to the R3 zone to allow for a proposed five-story, 41-unit apartment building. The rezoning request, as noted, is intended to facilitate development of a five-story, 41-unit apartment building on the site, whereas the property has been the location of a single detached dwelling and accompanying vacant lot for many years. The image on the screen shows a architectural rendering of what the proposed three-story apart-- or sorry, five-story apartment building, rather, would look like. The next slide illustrates a proposed site plan for the development. The proposed building would be oriented lengthwise, north to south, with the primary road access being off of Falconwood Drive as a shared access with existing apartment building to the west at 7 Falconwood Drive, as shown in the site plan image on the screen. The site consists, as noted, of two existing lots, being a vacant corner residential lot at the southwest corner of Kensington Road and Falconwood Drive, as well as an interior lot which contains an existing single detached dwelling that fronts onto Kensington Road. Both lots are located within the single detached residential R1S zone and are adjacent to established residential uses. Site is surrounded predominantly by low-density residential uses and directly abuts an existing apartment building in the R3 zone. And it's also noted that the Belvedere Golf Course, rather, is on the opposite side of Kensington Road to the east, shown by the open space zone on the image. The City of Charlottetown official plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choices. A variety of housing choices within neighborhoods are important as they provide options for the needs of different people at various stages of their lives. Applicable sections include Section 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 of the official plan, which pertain to this application. Subject property is noted to have opportunity for higher density than what currently exists and is allowed under existing zoning. Due to the location of the subject property within an existing neighborhood, it is important for the planning process in this case to thoughtfully consider the context of the surrounding uses and to seek feedback from those with potential concerns in the immediate area. Planning staff are of the opinion that the applicants have provided sufficient information and details such that the rezoning request should proceed to public consultation to gauge the thoughts, opinions, and feedback of council and local residents. So to conclude our recommendation to the Planning Board, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation, to consider a zoning bylaw amendment being a rezoning request to rezone the subject properties identified as PID numbers 278226 and 278234 from the current single detached residential R1S zone and placing them in the medium-density residential R3 zone to facilitate future development of the combined properties with the proposed five-story, 41-unit apartment building that would have both surface-level and underground parking. So that is a summary of the request, and I'll turn it back over to the Chair for any questions that the Board may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, David. So this is a request to recommend that council move this on to public consultation. Does anyone from the Board have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
No, I'm just going to--
Oh, okay. So we-- it's been moved by Counselor Beck. Do we have somebody to second it? Counselor McCabe? So the resolution is on the floor to move this on to council for council's approval to move on to public consultation. Any questions on the resolution?
I have a question on the application, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering if the lot consolidation has taken place, or is it a step which happens afterwards?
Through the chair, for Sin, the lot consolidation has not been applied for as yet, but it would be required ahead of any future building permit.
Okay, thank you, David.
Okay. So if there are no other questions, we can call the question. Any-- all those in favor? Great. Sin and Rosemary, are you in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Okay. So this will move on to council, for council to make the final recommendation for this move on to public consultation. So thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is also being presented by our Manager of Planning, and that is for 10 Frida Lane, PID 1179760. And I'll turn that over to David again to present.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. Just wait for the-- there's the slides, okay? Oh, there we go, okay. So as mentioned, this application concerns 10 Frida Lane, PID 1179670. This is a request to proceed to public consultation concerning a proposed rezoning for the subject property, which is currently in the comprehensive development area zone to rezone it to the R3 zone in order to allow for a proposed three-story, 30-unit apartment building on the subject property. As mentioned, the rezoning request is intended to facilitate a three-story, 30-unit building on the site, whereas the property has been otherwise a vacant lot for many years. The image on the screen illustrates a architectural rendering of what the proposed 30-unit apartment building would look like, and this is just a conceptual drawing. The next slide, this is a proposed site plan of the proposed development. The building would be proposed to be oriented lengthwise, running north to south. Primary road access would be from Frida Lane, as shown, and the building would shield the view of the parking area from Mount Edward Road, which is a main arterial road in this area. So the building would act as a buffer for the outdoor parking area to the rear. Site consists of an existing vacant corner residential lot at the northwest corner of Mount Edward Road and Towers Road. It's located, as mentioned, within the comprehensive development area CDA zone adjacent to established residential uses. The site is surrounded predominantly by low-density residential uses to the east, being single detached dwellings, and is-- to the west and south are located medium-density residential uses primarily in the form of row and townhouses. The official plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for a spectrum of housing choices. Variety of housing choices within neighborhoods are important as they provide options for the needs of different people at various stages of their lives. The applicable sections that would apply to this proposal are Section 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 of the official plan. The subject property presents an opportunity for higher density use. Due to the location of the property within an existing neighborhood, it is important that the planning process be thoughtful in considering the context of the surrounding uses and seek feedback from those with potential concerns in the immediate area. Planning staff are of the opinion that the applicants have provided sufficient information and detail such that the rezoning request should proceed to public consultation to gauge the thoughts, opinions, and feedback of council and local residents. So in conclusion, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation, to consider a zoning bylaw amendment, rezoning to rezone the subject property identified as 10 Frida Lane, PID 1179670, from the current comprehensive development area CDA zone, and place it within the medium-density residential R3 zone to facilitate future development of the site with a proposed three-story, 30-unit apartment building that would have surface-level parking. So that is a summary of the request, and I'll turn it back over to the Chair for any questions that the Board may have. Thank you.
Thanks, David. I'm just wondering, did this parcel that's zoned currently as CDA, did it have a comprehensive development plan prior to this that was earmarked for something else in the past?
Through the chair, it did. It was-- up until now, it was previously earmarked for a business, potential business commercial use, but the developers have, you know, in response to market dynamics, have brought forward this request to change the intent of that site to just residential.
Thank you. Counselor McCabe?
I was clarifying that as well. I thought when they-- initial, was that when it was going to be a medical center and medical home? Okay, so now they're wanting to go back to R3. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any-- go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. I was just wondering, what is the benefit to the applicant to have this rezone to R3 versus CDA? Because I assume that they could put this type of structure in a CDA zone, granted that they have that agreement with the city. Like, what's the benefit to them to going to R3?
Through the chair, I know the applicant is present today, and if he'd obliged, we could have them maybe provide an explanation for that if they're willing to. Yep.
It's just that people can't hear from home, that's all. We could hear you, but-- okay, thank you.
The reason we're requesting the rezoning is basically just for more flexibility in moving forward with the project in terms of not having to go to a public meeting every time we want to change a surface material or, you know, make it 28 units instead of 30. Yeah. Just the CDA is so constrained to a particular proposal, and there's little flexibility afterwards.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions? Sin or Rosemary, any other questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. So the staff are recommending that we move this on to council for council's recommendation to move to public consultation. Do I have somebody that would like to move that? Moved by Bob, seconded by Lee. So the question-- the resolutions on the floor. Any questions on the resolution? Okay. If not, all those in favor of moving this on to public consultation for council's decision. Great. Sin and Rosemary?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Okay.
In favor.
All right. Thank you for that. So this will move on to council. So thank you for that. Okay. Final item on the agenda, we have Laurel Palmer Thompson, our Planner 3, here to present the application. It's for 15 Park Street, PID 365593, and I will turn this over to Laurel Palmer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of Planning Board. This is an application to amend an approved development concept plan, the Eastern Gateway Master Plan, and an amendment to Section 3.5A, Eastern Gateway Waterfront of the official plan. This also requires an amendment to Appendix B, Comprehensive Development Area CDA Parcels and Permitted Uses of the Zoning and Development Bylaw. The property is located at the northeast corner of Park Street and Riverside Drive intersection, right here, in red, and it's designated comprehensive planning area by the City of Charlottetown official plan and zone comprehensive development area zone under Section 44 of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw. The property owner, the government of Prince Edward Island, is requesting an amendment to the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and the official plan to allow a community outreach center and a shelter for unhoused individuals to continue to operate long-term on the property. The request is outlined in a letter from Carleen Donnelly, CEO of Cups Calgary, who is a consultant hire for the Province of PEI, and it's included within your report. So, property context. The subject property, it's approximately-- sorry, back one. It's approximately 2.59 hectares, 6.40 acres in size. It's currently occupied by the former government of PEI Maintenance Garage, an office space used for COVID-19 testing site during the pandemic. There's a surface parking lot, a structure containing the outreach center, and two modular structures containing 50 temporary emergency transitional housing units. So these are the housing units, and this is the outreach center. So on October 13th, City Council approved a temporary use major variance for the emergency housing units to operate for a period of one year. On September 23rd, 2023, council granted an extension to allow these emergency housing units for an additional one-year period. Also, on January 22nd, 2024, council granted the approval to allow the community outreach center to operate on-site for a period of one year under a temporary use major variance. So the adjacent properties are occupied by a mix of land uses, including to the north, 15 Riverside Drive, Emco Limited Manufacturing Facility; to the east, Riverside Drive, Irving Oil Limited Storage Facility and Service Station; to the south, 385 Grafton Street, Tim Horton and Wendy's Eating and Drinking Establishments; and to the southwest and west, Government of PEI, undeveloped green space, PID numbers 825927 and 336537; to the west, City of Charlottetown Surface Parking Lot, PID number 365585, and Atlantic Lottery Corporation Facility, and low-density residential dwelling units further west of Long Beach and Park Streets. The comprehensive development area zoning classification applies to adjacent properties to the northwest, northeast, and south. Parking park culture applies to adjacent properties to the west and southwest, which separates the subject property from land-zoned, low-density residential R2 farther west. So the zoning and development bylaw stipulates the process for amending an approved development concept plan, and I have included that in the report. Specifically, Section 41.27 of the bylaw applies to this application. Section 41.2.7 states, before council approves or amends a development concept plan in a CDA zone, a public meeting shall be called in the same manner, mutatus, mutandus, as if an amendment to this bylaw were being considered. On October 10th, 2024, council passed a resolution to advance this application to the public consultation stage. Therefore, Planning Board must consider the request to amend the approved development concept plan and make the recommendation to council. Council may approve or reject the request to amend the development concept plan for the subject property. So in accordance with Section 3.10 of the zoning and development bylaw, on January 13th, notice was sent to 13 property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property. It advised them of the request in time of the public meeting, and residents were also advised of the public meeting via newspaper ads and were invited to submit comments either at the public meeting or through written submission. In response to the city's notification letter, 25 letters of opposition and one letter of support was received prior to 12 noon-- the 12 noon deadline on Thursday, January 30th, 2025. And following the 12 noon deadline, 18 letters of opposition and one letter of support was also received. The letters have also been included within the report. So the public meeting was held on January 30th at the Broad Charlottetown Hotel, and representatives from the provincial government were there. They presented the details of the application, including the data concerning the outreach center and homeless shelter. And following the presentation, we did have several residents speak. Many of the comments received, both at the public meeting and through written submission, centered around concerns about an increase in crime in the park and Beach Street's neighborhood, safety in the overall neighborhood, loitering and safety in Joe Gis Park and the Confederation Trail, infringement on quiet and peaceful enjoyment of residential properties. There were comments about perceived lack of communication between the province and area residents regarding the long-term intentions for the site. Residents stated that there were previous assurances from the city and the province that this would not become a permanent location, and concerns were also raised about the deviation from the long-term vision of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. So in terms of location, residential uses are limited, except for the west end of Beach and Park Street. This area of the city tends to be industrial in nature and contains uses such as school board, government garage, parking lots, government office buildings, Irving Oil Tanks, Charlottetown Sewerage Treatment Plant is also located along Riverside Drive. More to the site is the Charlottetown Driving Park. Also to the southwest of the site is land owned by the city, Zoned Institutional, which is used to hold events. Park Street is unique in that one half of the street is split with residential uses. The other half is more industrial and commercial in nature, and the division of uses on the street are separated with a tree buffer. Beach Street, it once terminated at a cul-de-sac, but it's now connected to Park Street, and Beach Street is comprised of low-density residential dwellings. This area of the city falls within Comprehensive Planning Area 2, Character Areas 3 and 4 of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan, and the Eastern Gateway Master Plan was drafted in March of 2011, and as the document states, the master plan is intended to help better understand the role of the gateway in the city and guide new opportunities for growth and development. The plan was not intended as a short-term initiative, but was developed as a concept to create a framework for more detailed planning into the future with a horizon of 25 to 40 years, and the plan is currently in its 14th year. Since the adoption of the plan, projects that have been implemented include realignment of Water Street, neighborhood completion with Park Street realignment forming a president between Park and Beach Street, boulevard landscaping, extension, and redevelopment of trails through Joe Gis Park. Character Areas 3 and 4 of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan designate these areas as a site for a multi-use sport and entertainment complex, and the plan recommended for both-- the mews, sorry. A new road is proposed to be-- is proposed in the plan to be constructed on the north side of provincial lands, which would provide access to Riverside Drive and to land owned by DP Murphy, also connecting to Grafton. by DP Murphy, also connecting to Grafton Street. That road would go right here, connect to Grafton Street and down to Riverside Drive. The long-term vision of the plan designates DP Murphy land as an area for higher-order commercial and office uses that would support the muse. I've included policies for the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and the official plan in the report for your review, and section 3.5A to 6 of the official plan specifically talks about the multi-use sports and entertainment center being located on the existing provincial garage site if it is to be vacated. In consideration of this application, it should be noted that on July 9th, 2024, council passed a resolution to provide funding to Charlottetown Civic Center Management to develop an RFP for expansion to the East Link Center. In this, if this expansion occurs, the muse, which is proposed for the subject property, may not be necessary at this location. Therefore, staff feels a further study would be required at that time to determine a compatible use that is complementary to surrounding land uses and the overall vision of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. So, we did conduct stakeholder consultation during this review, and comments from stakeholders were mixed. I've included them in the report for your review. Notwithstanding the land use policies for this area of the city, the official plan also addresses healthcare initiatives, and these policies are included in the report. Also, since the subject property is located on the periphery of a low-density residential neighborhood, the staff determined an area of influence through GIS mapping, and this is the map that was produced, and that designates the boundary of the subject property. It's based on a 20-minute walking radius. So, this whole area, here's the subject property, this area outlined in blue is noted as a 20-minute walking radius from the site. As a mitigative measure, when the temporary variances were approved to alleviate residents' concerns around neighborhood safety, an additional six police officers were required for the city's chief of police. The additional police officers were mandated to patrol and monitor that area of influence to prevent any issues that would arise or could arise. These officers were employed for a period of one year from the date of issuance of an occupancy permit. There was also requirement for the province to fund daily garbage and safe disposal cleanup of service within the public right-of-way throughout the area of influence, and that service is ongoing. It should be considered that the area of influence does contain many amenities that are beneficial as support services to the outreach center and shelter at this location. This area is also close to other shelters, transition facilities, and medical services, and it's within a safe walking distance for these clients to these services. So, the zoning and development bylaw, we also examined the application against the regulations in the bylaw, specifically section 44.2, which sets out parameters for assessing development concept plans. And the bylaw states the council should consider the maintenance of design standards of the proposed buildings and their accessibility with respect to land uses and the character and scale of existing and proposed development in the vicinity. The quality of architectural design of all proposed buildings, their compatibility with the architectural character of adjacent development. When assessing the proposed concept plan for the site against the requirements set out in the bylaw, the site layout does not facilitate connectivity between adjacent land uses. This was one of the cornerstones of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan, and given the requirements of the site to be fenced, there's little opportunity for the trail system to develop as suggested in the plan. In addition, it is the opinion of planning staff that the building topology proposed for the site could not be considered appropriate build form on a long-term basis for this area of the Eastern Gateway. The Eastern Gateway Master Plan proposes a synergy between uses. Therefore, it is important to assess the request to ensure that an approval would not preclude objectives for the Eastern Gateway Master Plan being met. So, planning staff recognize the importance of providing support for vulnerable populations within communities and the need for services. It has been considered that the plan was developed in 2011, and many changes, including land use and social impacts, have occurred since the adoption of the plan. However, in this instance, staff are tasked with assessing if, assessing if the proposed change in use will attribute to achieving the long-term vision of land use within the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. As stated in the Eastern Gateway Master Plan, the Eastern Gateway Waterfront and Master Plan provides a long-term vision for how this portion of central Charlottetown could change in the future, and includes recommendations for public open space, land use, traffic circulation, appropriate build form, and new pedestrian and cycling network. The subject property was designated in the Eastern Gateway Master Plan as a future site for multi-use sports complex, and notwithstanding the fact that the most cost-effective options to provide a multi-use facility are currently being explored through an RFP for upgrades to the East Link Center, there has been no formal decisions made. If the muse doesn't proceed, there should be further public consultation on the Eastern Gateway Master Plan with the public and stakeholders to determine the highest and best use for the site that is compatible with adjacent land uses and the long-term vision of the plan. This is an integral property in the formation of the Eastern Gateway, and changing the use has further impacts on adjacent land uses long-term. For example, the proposal of higher-order commercial uses on DP Murphy land and expanding the open space network to include east-west corridors. One of the grounding principles of the plan was to celebrate the Eastern Gateway as an entryway to the city, and a main focus of the plan is to create new opportunities for tourism to this area of Charlottetown. Staff did support the previous applications by the province for a major variance to allow for short-term use on the site, as staff did not opine that it would compromise the long-term intent for future use of the property as per land use policies under the OP and the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. However, it is the opinion of planning staff that approval of this application long-term could be detrimental, could be detrimental to the long-term vision of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and the wider area. Therefore, we are recommending denial of the request to amend the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and official plan based on the fact that it does not meet the intent and purpose of the land use policies in the official plan, Eastern Gateway Master Plan, or the zoning and development bylaw. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel, for your report. I'll open it up to the Planning Board if they have any questions for Laurel, or also the applicant is here as well. So, just in case, so the staff is not recommending this, they're not recommending to council to approve this application, so I'll just open it up to Planning Board if they have any questions. And, oh, go ahead, Counsel Back. Okay. Sin or Rosemary, do you have any questions for Laurel?
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, the area of influence, and I, you know, and I know this has been talked about in the past, but, you know, often mentioned that, you know, this area, the services for the, for the inhabitants of the shelter home. My question is, what are these services that we're talking about? Can I have a list of the services that is needed that is within that area, which is at walking distance for the resident of the shelter home?
Well, I did list them in the report, but there's other transitions facilities, there's shelters, medical services, there's shopping, grocery stores, any services that anyone else would use within the community.
Thank you, Laurel. And, and the next question is, well, some of these services are also available in a location, you know, could be, you know, could be in a different location as well, especially shopping and grocery stores, you know, clinic. I'm just talking about the area of influence. I know the hospital is a little outside the area of influence. My question, again, this is perhaps to the applicant, and can this service not be made available in a different location? And I'm asking this question precisely because this requires an amendment to an adopted plan, which has been in place for the last 14 years. Is there a no alternative location for this proposal? Where the services, the existing services could not be provided?
I'll take a stab at that question for you, and then I'll move it over to Laurel. So, staff are recommending that this project, this application not be, is not being recommended for approval. As for whether or not these services are available in other parts of the city, I'm not sure if that's a relevant question today. However, Laurel, if you had anything else to add to that?
Yes, Madam Chair. I mean, that's hard for me to answer. I mean, there's services throughout the city. Without knowing a location, a specific location, it's hard to determine an answer to that question. But, I mean, I suppose, yes, there are other services within the city that, depending on where the, the shelter is located, could service it.
Right. Thank you so much, Laurel. And I apologize, Madam Chair. It just was to see, you know, to get a perspective from the planning staff and perhaps the applicant that, you know, about whether the services is available, because often this question comes in about this particular site, and I'm talking it from a strict land use perspective, that the, you know, the services are closed. While the services are closed, in, the city provides services across, within its boundary, across the city, the services could easily be available elsewhere. Again, I'm not talking about any other site, which, you know, I'm just talking about, you know, this particular site. So, that's not a relevant argument, saying that, you know, this is the only site where you can provide the services. Now, I'm just trying to, you know, make up our mind, you know, how to vote on this, and again, keeping it strictly to land use in this matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, if we don't have any other questions, the, the Planning and Heritage Department recommend to the Planning Board that they recommend for council to deny the request to amend the Eastern Gateway Master Plan in, in respect to comprehensive planning area 2, and to amend section 3.5A of the official plan, Eastern Gateway Waterfront, to amend Appendix B, Comprehensive Development Area CDA Parcels and permitted uses of the zoning and development bylaw to permit a community outreach center and an emergency transition shelter for the property located at 15 Park Street, PID 365593. So, do I have somebody to move this, this recommendation?
I move to support staff's recommendation to deny this application.
Okay. So, moved by Counsel McCabe to support staff's recommendation, and seconded by Counselor Back. So, the resolution is on the floor. Do we have any questions on the resolution, which is supporting staff's recommendation? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sin and Rosemary?
In favor.
In favor, Madam Chair.
And all those opposed? Okay, so that's all in favor with one opposed. Jackie is opposing that. Thank you for that. Okay, so that concludes our agenda for today. Do I have any business arising, or do I have any new business? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Lee. All those in favor? Thank you.
In favor.